Good morning, everyone. I would like to call to order the Mayor Commission Work Session of November 25th, 2019. The time is now 9:00 a.m. First item on the agenda is Strong Mayor Duties and Responsibilities. Commissioner Nearing, I know this was put on at your request, so if you want to introduce this item, we'll go to the staff report.
Okay, thank you very much, and good morning, everyone. Happy Monday. So, I think the best way to kind of proceed on this is to do a level set in why I had brought this to the administration's attention. Let me preface first by saying that the intention here is really about being as efficient and responsive to our residents and our businesses here in the city of West Palm Beach, no more, no less. That is what my intention is and the reason why I brought this to the administration. So, about a month ago, we received an email from you, Mayor, regarding, well, actually, it was Halloween, regarding communication with staff. And very quickly, it says, "It has come to my attention that the commissioners are submitting requests, instructions, or questions." And that's the important word here, "questions," directly to staff. And you go on to say, "While you, you know, fully appreciate the desire to resolve issues and address concerns, you discuss the city's charter. You also request that commissioners directly send emails to Tiffany David, who is the commission liaison, and a copy to Ms. Johnson, interim city administrator." And so, I read the email, and while I agree with requests and instructions per our charter, the word that confused me in the email was "questions," because that is primarily how I have used my communication with city staff, especially assistant city administrators, has been "questions," not directives, not instructions, but "questions." So, in the email, it refers to Tiffany David, who is, again, the commission liaison and also the neighborhood-first liaison. So, once again, very clear that under the charter, the mayor, he or she can designate any staff to have communications with the city commissioners. I understand that, not questioning that at all. My request to administration was to reconsider the approach as outlined in the email and permit commissioners to directly communicate with assistant city administrators regarding "questions only," not directives, not instructions, "questions only." And I made this request for several reasons that I just very quickly want to outline. First of all, today, we have five city assistant administrators. This time last year, I believe we had two city, assistant city administrators. So, now, we have five assistant city administrators, and I was a part of approving that, so no judgment there, it's just the reality. The other point is, we have a position who is, the title is Neighborhoods First Liaison and Commission Liaison, and it is a position that I, as a commissioner, had no influence, no suggestions around either the job description or the person who would fill that position. And so, again, no judgment there, it's just the reality of it. I also took some time to research through the commission office, and thank you, staff, the strong mayor government around the state of Florida, and just to kind of get a better idea of how the commissioners interact with staff. And what I thought was the case, but it was interesting to see that, it is very factual, is that most strong mayor governments in the state of Florida, with comparable numbers in terms of our city residents, have legislative aides. And again, that was interesting, because we don't here in the city of West Palm Beach, and I'm not making a recommendation that we adopt that, but it was just interesting that those legislative aides are the conduit in terms of getting information back out to the constituents per the commission. And finally, it's the charter itself, and I appreciate administration for providing a backup. If we look at the charter directly, in Section 2.04, and I'm just going to start halfway down, because this is the most important piece to me, "except for the purpose of inquiry." And inquiry is the act of asking for information. So, it says very clearly in the charter, "Except for the purpose of inquiry, the city commissioners collectively and individually shall deal with administrative matters solely through the mayor or the mayor's designee, and shall not collectively or individually give orders to any subordinate of the mayor, either publicly or privately." And so, again, my request was really around inquiry, it was really around asking questions. And again, and I'll finish on this point, I really appreciate the backup, it was very helpful, and I had gotten copies as well. We've had, since 1991, the strong mayor form of government, and in every administration at one point in time, and I can appreciate this, a mayor has had to send out a memorandum concerning this very issue. So, if you go back to Honorable Graham, she sent out in April of 1993 around communicating with directors, and in her email or a message, it states very clearly, "direct request." Also, the Honorable Daze, in June of 2000, it says, "demands being placed on city staff by commissioners." Fast forward to Honorable Mujo, "shall give orders." And the latest communication, "submitting requests, instructions, or questions directly." My holdup is around the questions and the efficiency in which, as a commissioner, to get information back out to the constituents. So, I had asked that this be brought up, and I had a conversation with the city attorney on this as well, to review the charter, and I guess we have some information regarding that. But that's my request, I want to just be very clear about that. It is around elected officials, five of them, being able to ask questions of assistant city attorneys, five of them, administrators, sorry, thank you, five of them, questions, not directives, not orders, not instructions. And then I'll say this last thing, some may say, "Well, that gets confusing. It confuses staff, because it's hard to tell if it's a question or a directive." And here's what I'll say to that, and I empathize with it, "But I did not get into banking, because I don't like numbers." There is no way that I think any staff, especially at that level, comes to City Hall and doesn't have an expectation that they will have to deal with the pressures both from an administration and commissioners. And again, I'm not here to confuse that, but questions, questions, that's where I'm held up on this, and that's where I'm seeking assistance, and would love to hear from my fellow commissioners on this issue as well. Thank you.
All right, before we get into commissioners' reactions, let's hear from the city attorney as to the information. I believe a lot of information was provided as backup, and if you wanted to expound upon that, then we'll get into a discussion.
Mayor, I have a very brief...
And just commissioners, Kimberly Rothenberg, the city attorney's not here, she has a family medical emergency, so she's unable to be here this morning, so I'm filling in for her. Mayor, I have a short PowerPoint that sort of goes to the strong mayor and answers this question, if you would like me to do that.
Please.
As Commissioner Nearing, this is just really a brief background, as Commissioner Nearing mentioned, there was a charter referendum by the citizens to basically give a new balance of power to the government in terms of the city commission, the strong mayor form of government. So, the city commission, it's the governing body of the city, they have the legislative functions, approve the budget. The charter, Section 301, sets out the executive responsibilities of the mayor as the chief executive officer and administrative head, directs the administration of all departments and agencies, appoints and removes the mayor's staff, including the city administrator, appoints and removes the department directors, except the police chief, fire chief, and city attorney must be ratified by the city commission, appoints and removes members of the boards and committees, prepares the annual budget, prepares the agenda for the commission, timely provides information as the city commission may collectively or individually require concerning the operation of city departments, initiates investigations, and has the veto power. The charter in 204, as Commissioner Nearing also pointed out, is specific as to commission-staff interaction. So, the commissioners must address administrative matters solely through the mayor or the mayor's designee. They shall not give orders to city staff, they may directly seek legal advice from the city attorney, and may reasonably, and this is where I think the, where the charter says, "except for inquiry," this is how inquiries get addressed by the city commission. City commission may reasonably summon a department director to appear at a city commission meeting to provide information and/or answer questions. So, that's the ability of the commission to receive answers. Other than going through the mayor's designee, they can ask a department director to provide information or answer questions. That's what I have.
Okay, thank you. I'll weigh in just a bit, and then we'll open up for discussion. There seems to be a lot of emphasis placed on the word "question." A question is nothing other than a request for information. So, in my view, it still should go through my office or my designee. Now, if there is a concern about having to go through Tiffany, the commission liaison, we could tinker with that, and we could go back to, and I'll suggest, that we'll go back to the approach that was taken by every other strong mayor preceding me, where all the information requests would go, be funneled through the city administrator. I'm fine with that. And so, if, I don't know if that was the issue of having to deal with some of them below the city administrator level, we can keep it as every other mayor has done prior to me, every other strong mayor, where you just run all this through the city administrator, and he or she will find the appropriate staff person to deal with it. But a question is nothing more than a request for information, so I don't treat them differently. But anyway, Commissioner Peruzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a quick question for the assistant city attorney. Does the, and I haven't read the whole city charter, I probably should have before coming here today, but does this charter anywhere define what the word "inquiry" means in this context? Does inquiry mean something that's formally, collectively, as a commission? Or is, could inquiry also be defined as individually as commissioners? Is there a definition section that defines inquiry?
The charter does not have a definition section, but in this one, Section 2.04, that talks about city commission and staff interaction, is where it talks about their, the commissioners collectively or individually must deal with administrative matters solely through the mayor or the mayor's designee. And it is also the place where it says, where the commission wants an answer or to provide information, is they can summon a director to a commission meeting.
Mayor, may I follow up?
Yes.
I think that the sticking point here is, "except for the purpose of an inquiry." So, I guess we got, we have to determine what an inquiry actually is. Is it being used in the formal context of us collectively as a governing body versus us individually as commissioners? And it sounds like we don't have a definition for that, so, within the charter.
Well, two sentences later, it talks about, if you want an answer from a department director, you can have them come to a commission meeting, and it says, "individually or collectively, you put your questions through the mayor or the mayor's designee." So, I mean, that was a section in the charter that was meant to address the interaction between the commission and city staff. So, I mean, I think inquiry is being used in its regular term of just a question or, you know, a need for information.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start off by saying, I respect and understand the strong mayor form of government and the need for the mayor to be in charge of his staff. When we look at what we have before us, this was established in 1991, so just to put that in context, in 1991, there were no emails, no social media, no internet, very limited cellphone interaction, and these are all things that we deal with today. So, our constituents are looking for immediate answers in the same way they're giving us immediate information. I think part of, some of my concern here is, I, like my fellow commissioners here, were part of approving about a million and a half dollars' worth of staff, which included five assistant city administrators, and I did so with assurances from administrative staff at the time that it would create better efficiencies, that I would have direct access to ask questions to those assistant city administrators. I know there is some concern around the word "inquiry." According to the charter, the charter says, "we are permitted to make inquiries," and I think, you know, my request is to continue that communication with assistant city administrators, all of which are six-figure-paying salary jobs, high-level executives, not to go ask questions of the code enforcement officer or someone who may take my request in a different way, where we had previously been directed by previous city manager, which I understand now from mayor's directive was not the way mayor had wanted staff to go, but the previous direction was to reach out directly to only senior-level staff, assistant city administrators, with a copy to the city manager, and in my view, for pure purposes of efficiency. Understanding that previous mayors have all given this directive, previous mayors have not had the kind of support staff that I believe current administration has, and again, being a party to creating that system, I was happy to do so, knowing that I would have better access to those employees. So, I guess it's a little disheartening at this point, and understanding there was miscommunications, perhaps, but I feel like making that vote at that time, now I have a change in scenario that makes, what would have, my decision would have been different had I had information like this. And so, again, my request is to make sure that we are communicating most efficiently and still maintain that system where the city manager is completely in control of where that communication is flowing and completely aware of the "questions only." I think in the interest of what we're talking about, efficiency, the kinds of requests and the volume of requests we get from our citizens, to bring every single one of those to a public meeting to ask questions is not the most efficient way for us to address those. You know, I leave it to administration and my fellow commissioners to also weigh in, but if we could find a way to make, under the charter, the mayor's designee, to just expand that definition of designee for inquiry only, I think it would help me as a commissioner to do my job.
Well, just to address that point, if the city administrator is the designee, I'm not sure how that is inefficient. He or she knows which staff person, and may even be below, the assistant city administrator position, to get their information more quickly. It gets funneled through a single source, and so, if the designee is the city administrator, who is the chief administrative officer for the city, I don't know how it could get more efficient than that. I've not heard of any concerns, complaints, bottlenecks at the city administrator level. If you have a question, and again, this is exactly as every other strong mayor has done it preceding me, whether it's through telephone, fax, or snail mail, we now have a quicker way of responding. You get a request from a citizen, simply forward that to the city administrator, and we will jump right on it. Actually, the desire to have it go through Ms. David as a commission liaison is to add even more efficiency, but if there's resistance to that, that's fine. Just shoot everything to the city administrator. I think in Ms. Johnson, we have somebody who's very capable of getting it to the appropriate person in a timely fashion, so that you can respond as efficiently and quickly as possible to your constituents or residents. Yes, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. I respectfully disagree. I do believe that in, you know, the last 18 months that I've been a commissioner with previous administration, I know that Ms. Johnson has been implementing, I feel like, a little bit more efficiencies, but I had a number of requests that I would send through, you know, the one designee that I was allowed to speak with, and that oftentimes, I would have to have multiple follow-up to be able to get the answers. And so, along with my commissioners approving the additional assistant city administrators, we were, and I can speak for myself, I was specifically told that I would be able to meet regularly with each of those city assistant city administrators, and quite frankly, I remember telling my husband just how much more efficient it was and how I felt like I was getting more answers, I was able to respond to residents more quickly. We get multiple emails, multiple text messages, requests via Nextdoor app, on social media, constantly getting asked for answers, and, you know, for that, I don't know how long it was, maybe about six to eight months, I really felt like we were getting answers back to them rather quickly, and felt like it was a really good system. In the last few months, it being reverted back to funneling through one or two individuals, I have noticed a lag time in response, and in some responses even not being, or some questions not being answered, so much so that I was at a neighborhood meeting, was asked a question, and other folks who were able to email staff had an answer that I didn't have, that I had actually asked and never received a response to. So, my goal is 100% about efficiency, getting accurate information, maybe to use Commissioner Nearing's word, having a level set with the whole community of what information is it that the commissioners will have, because I think there is some level of expectation of the type of information that we'll provide to our constituents. I think also very important to me is having a timely process for closing the loop. So, when a question is asked, I, you know, I certainly understand that sometimes the process takes a long time to figure it out, we're working on possible solutions, and that may take weeks or sometimes months, but when there is no answer given back to us to say, "Hey, I'm working on this, we're working with staff on a solution," that leaves us in a really bad situation with the residents as well. And then, finally, what I wanted to say in these comments here was, I think most recently, some of the frustration that I have felt, that I've heard some of my fellow commissioners mention, is just when the media has information before we do, or information that we don't, that that makes it very difficult for us to do our job and, you know, making sure that we're putting the city first in making our decisions.
Commissioner Nearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Attorney, do you know the last time the charter was visited or updated?
2012.
I don't know the exact date.
2012.
Okay, so...
Okay, well, I actually knew the answer to that, and I wanted to ask you. And would you consider, Madam Attorney, that the charter's a living document in that, would you consider it a living document?
Well, it goes through charter, regular charter reviews every decade or so, so at that point in time, the citizens get to weigh in, and yes, it becomes a living document when the citizens change it.
And you mentioned, Mayor, if I can, you mentioned every decade, is that best practices in terms of just as an ongoing, and that I don't know the answer to, in terms of how often a charter should be looked at? Are you saying 10 years?
It's usually around that period of time, 10 to 15 years, that's best practices and the average for what most municipalities do.
Okay. And the last thing I have is, I had asked Attorney Rothenberg, and hopefully, all is well with her and her family, today, to be prepared today, if she could, to talk about what that looks like in terms of the charter, because again, I think, as stated on this dais, and I can only speak for myself in this, this is not a, I am not here to usurp the strong mayor form of government. That's what we have in the city, and as a full-time resident, and a resident that will retire here, I am for it, and I'm supportive of it. But I'm more supportive of being efficient, I'm more supportive of, just because we've done things one way, doesn't mean that if it's not efficient, or if it doesn't make sense, that we shouldn't look at how it is that we change that. And again, I think the variable for me in this is that we have very professional, bright, very, you know, staff who know this work, who understand history of these projects, who can answer a question that I need to get back to the TPA, as my colleagues and I are on that board. There are often times where we have less than an hour to try and sound halfway smart in a public meeting on an issue that is critically important to our residents and our city, and so, that was the genesis behind me bringing this up. It is not to in any way, all of a sudden, change our form of government. It is really about, I mean, I really want you to hear the spirit in which I am bringing this, and it is not to put more on the plate of our city employees or staff, but I do go back to, you know, it is why I'm not a banker. I don't like numbers, and in a city government, this is par for the course, and I just will always believe that. So, you know, obviously, Mayor, it's up to you and your administration in terms of, I guess, the next steps and how we proceed, but I wanted to, like I said, bring this and kind of do a level set and hear what my fellow commissioners thought about it.
Well, the counter to kind of the open dialogue policy, and this was expressed in each of the memos, that was before, is staff gets confusing signals. What prompted me to send the email that I sent is that I was hearing from senior staff that, you know, they were being bombarded with information requests and what they interpreted as orders from the commissioners. And that's what prompted me to take the action that I did, because it affects their ability to be efficient in the job that they do. Now, some have said, "Well, you know, that's what they paid for." No, they didn't pay for having competing agendas and getting competing requests so that they can not do their job most efficiently, which benefits the citizens. So, again, this was a issue that has been debated at this level between commissioners and the strong mayor since the inception of the strong mayor form of government. And now, commissioners, what I can ask you is if you feel that you are not getting responded to an efficient matter, feel free to bring it to my attention, so that, listen, I was a commissioner for eight years, I understand... a commissioner for eight years, I understand what comes with that job, and I want you to be as effective as possible. And if you feel that there are backlogs or delays, please bring it directly to me and I will get to the bottom of it. But what I'm not willing to do is to dilute the power of the strong mayor in such a way that now staff is confused about where their directions are coming from. And so, no, I'm not going to, and I don't know what promises were made to you at the time you were being asked to vote on a budget item, I wasn't privy to those discussions. And so I don't know if that, you know, apparently you were told that we would do this in order to help you get your questions answered more efficiently. All I can tell you is that I understand your desire for efficiency and the need of information, but I have to counterbalance that, I have to balance that against the staff and their needs to understand what the priorities are and not to get bombarded with requests and information from several sources so that they are not able to do their job most efficiently. So I believe that this tactic, funneling everything through the city administrator, will be the best way to balance those competing interests, and I urge you to contact me directly if you feel that this isn't working for you, and we will, you know, take another look at it. But I'm not trying to hamper your ability to do your job or be responsive to your constituents. Your constituents are my constituents, and I certainly want the city to be perceived as efficient and effective as possible. But on the other hand, I can't have staff torn in many different directions, and that's the balance that we'll take. Yes, Madam President.
Thank you. And, you know, I think we all want efficiency, and what's interesting is taxing even our assistant city administrators with constant meetings probably isn't the most efficient way either, although it feels a little bit more responsive than having to be funneled through all one individual. I used to have weekly meetings with our previous city administrator, and I can tell you that 99% of the time that I had those meetings, we were, I was constantly bringing up that we need a better system for transparency of information and requests, and a system, some kind of ticketing system, more thorough information on our website. And quite frankly, I think probably 60 to 75% of the requests that I receive could be answered if we had some of those systems in place. And I know that we have talked about better use of technology in our strategic plan and better communication, but, you know, I think that if we knew that that plan, or at least I speak for myself, if I knew that that plan was in process and I was assured that there was a plan in process with previous administration, I have not heard that brought up yet, but I have started to work on scheduling my weekly meetings with our new interim assistant administrator. But I think that that is something that would help us with efficiencies as well. Not only would we be able to look up the information, but our constituents would as well. So then that would leave the more complex questions that maybe would become less frequent, or we would have less frequent requests for all of these just questions about AIPP, questions about where are we on the status of a project, the questions that I get daily.
Let me address that, and that's fair. I mean, that's exactly why I brought a commission liaison slash neighborhood first representative on as part of my staff. We are, and one of her charges was to come up with a technological infrastructure that would allow for more efficient responses to citizens even outside of going to you. We were looking at the 822 system, that is antiquated, and she's looking at that and looking at alternatives. We are in the midst of revamping our website and making that a more efficient vehicle for getting information out to the public. So we are working on those, and that's not really the topic of consideration at this time, but I recognize that there are some log jams vis-à-vis citizen interaction with the city. Frankly, citizens shouldn't always have to go through the commissioners to get answers to questions. Yes, we should have an infrastructure, technological infrastructure in place, whether it's a website, whether it's an 822 system, or even an app. I was at a conference just last week where I saw a great app, and I'm going to talk to staff about it and see if we can look at that. Yeah, it's a new day, technology is our friend. So we're looking at all of those as we move forward. But the matter for today, that at least the topic for today, is whether there will be a system where commissioners can interact with assistant city administrators, and I'm not willing to go that far yet. Yes, Commissioner Verduzey.
Thank you, Mayor. And respectfully, I too remember being told that this number of assistant city administrators would facilitate better communication with the commissioners and that they would potentially be in a position to be more responsive to our requests. You know, we've got five assistant city administrators, we've got a police chief and a fire chief, all high-level, seven high-level executives who report either directly to the administrator or to the mayor. I'm not sure if those staff members are currently being bombarded with questions that funneling them through a single source is going to make that problem any better or alleviate, you know, the workload. I too concur with the sentiments today of my fellow commissioners. We're really, we're not looking to challenge your authority, Mayor, we're simply just making sure that we can be responsive to our constituents.
And as I said, if this isn't working out, please let me know, but let's implement it. And, you know, the number keeps going out, about five assistant city administrators, actually down to four, and I'm looking to prune that even further, so, and I'm not even sure how that relates, but I wasn't privy to the conversations or the promises and that were made to you to urge you to vote in that direction. I appreciate the vote, but again, I've got to balance the competing concerns of the staff and their ability to get their job done efficiently, and the concern of the commissioners to get information efficiently and effectively, and we will try it as has been tried before with every other strong mayor, we'll continue to funnel things through, and I will have Tiffany to continue to work on technological advances so that the public can have an avenue for communicating directly with the city and hopefully alleviate that. But be that as it may, we'll continue to work through the city administrator. And Ms. Johnson, I would ask that you prioritize any communication you get from commissioners, get it to the appropriate person ASAP, and let the commissioners know where it is and when they can expect an answer to whatever their inquiry, question, request might be. And we'll take, we'll continue to tweak it and take another look at it. And if the commissioners are not working for you, let me know directly, and we'll try to get there. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. My last comment. Madam Attorney, could you get to me or the commissioners just the process, what it would look like to review this portion of the charter, not the entire charter, but just this specific portion? I had made that request of Attorney Rothenberg, so I'd imagine that maybe she was prepared to present that today and just didn't have it, but I'd like to see that in terms of the process. Thank you.
Don't you have to, I believe you have to appoint a charter review commission, and once you open it up, everything in the charter is subject to review, am I correct?
I believe so.
Yeah, so it's not like you could just narrow the inquiry to a particular section, and it is done by the appointment of a charter, Citizens Charter Review Committee, and as I said, everything in the charter is subject to review. So I don't think there's a way to just narrow their review to a certain section. Commissioner Shov.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've heard you say several times, if it's not working for you, let me know. And I've heard four of five commissioners, I won't speak for you, Commissioner Riles, that are telling you that this isn't working, and so.
But we just implemented, I just sent out the indication that everything should go through the city administrator. You were saying under the prior city administrator, you were able to contact assistant city administrators, all right? So when did I send this out? October 31st? This is November, so you're saying in less than a month, you know this isn't working?
So what I'm saying is, we've worked, a number of commissioners on this dais have worked under both systems, under a different number of administrators, and, you know, indicating that you too have also, as a commissioner, worked under the system, and it's become restrictive. That being said, our city charter is our guiding document, and according to the letter of the law of what the city charter says, except for purpose of an inquiry, that says to me that according to this document, I as a commissioner or anybody else can still send an inquiry to any member of staff. And I think today's conversation was to try to find some middle ground for that, and I mean, Mayor, at your discretion, obviously acknowledging you can tell your staff not to acknowledge back to an inquiry. Obviously not the place where I think progress happens, but I think when we're looking at what exactly the charter says, if we're looking to change the charter somewhere down the line, or at least have that inquiry, the charter today, as it exists, says except for the purpose of an inquiry, which means I can make an inquiry to anybody, I just can't have conversations with directives, et cetera, to any other party. So, you know, I think as we look there, the city charter as it exists already gives commissioners that authority to send the question. Again, Mayor is in charge of city staff and can direct city staff in any way, but perhaps that's a middle ground to say, I have resident inquiries, and just being able to connect that conduit to say, dear resident, copy in a city administrator, this is the person you need to talk to. I think even just that step is helpful for us to get constituent questions answered. So even if we take that interim step without, that way there's no directive, there's no telling staff which way we as commissioners would like them to go.
Yes, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. When your commission liaison, Ms. Davis, first came on, I was doing that very similar process. I actually even had like a template of how I could make the introduction of her to residents. And at the, and I'm sharing all of this because you said you'd like feedback on this, for the first month or so, it was very responsive, got good answers and had a good system. As I imagine, as months went by, the requests started stacking up and more information started being requested, and responses started to be delayed or not happen altogether. And so I think that, you know, I think we do have an issue here, and whether it is, you know, I was appreciative of the commission liaison position, although I've never seen a job description or an outline of, these are the things that she can handle, these are, you know, I just, I think we need some guidance on who we're communicating with for what and how, and what's the best way to get the answers to, and if a resident asks for this type of question, this is where they can easily find it. I just, I feel like we're walking here without a map, and we're looking for some help to be able to get answers quickly to our residents.
Okay, and I appreciate that. So the map is to go through the city administrator, and I will continue to work with Tiffany behind the scenes so we could come up with processes that are more efficient from citizen to city communication. But the map is running through the city administrator, and we will go from there. Commissioner Neering?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, City Attorney, I just want to make sure that my request didn't get nixed based on an opinion, so what I'm asking you to do is go back and provide to me or the commission the process for a commission, I mean, a charter review. It's from my understanding, and our city administrator gave me this opinion, so I wish she was here today to talk for herself, that we could look at it. City attorney, I'm sorry, sorry, Ms. Johnson, city attorney, gave me this opinion that we could in fact look at a section, so there might be some confusion, so I just want to make sure that you heard that request and that you, thank you, appreciate it.
Commissioner Riles?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in, Mayor. I think your mind is already made up, but I wanted to echo the sentiment of my colleagues on the dais. I can tell you firsthand that I have noticed an appreciable difference in the responsiveness to questions that I've had subsequent to your email versus before. And in fact, essentially, the, my constituents have a greater ability to speak with staff than I do, that I'm hamstrung as a commissioner to be able to address their concerns, and they don't understand that, and it puts us in a very bad spot. But I do understand that you've already made up your mind, although I would prayerfully ask that you reconsider and give us the ability to speak with high-level staff and ask questions. I'm certain that they can discern the difference between a question and a demand.
Anything else on this item? Okay, item number two, CRA Executive Director. Ms. Johnson, you want to bring everyone up to speed on where we are?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, members of the commission. Work session, item number two, relates to the CRA Executive Director. Based on the discussion that was had at the last work session, there were a number of items that the commission asked to see as it relates to the potential recruitment process. So as part of your backup, what we have delineated for your consideration is just sort of a compare and contrast between the in-house position, if we were to go that direction, and the contract executive director position as it stands right now. We have also indicated proposed posting sites for the consideration of the mayor and the commission, as well as the recruitment announcement, and then the various steps that the CRA Board would need to take to effectuate the change in the position, the steps that the city attorney would have to take, as well as the city commission. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor, and the commission for a discussion and direction.
All right, now commissioners, I'm sure you know the context in which we're looking at this item. It has been my suggestion that we remove from the RMA contract the position of the CRA Executive Director. You know, I don't know if you want to, we can certainly tee that up for discussions, whether you think that's advisable or not. If you do think it's advisable, then this is a chance to weigh in on what you would like to see in this position, so that as we, again, assuming that you decide to go this way, if we do, then we need to publish the job description, publish it, solicit applications and move on with it so that we can hit the ground, so that we could continue the work of the CRA and have a CRA director, executive director in-house as soon as possible. Questions? Yes, Commissioner Riles?
No, Shov was before me.
Okay, Shov, you know, Commissioner Shov.
Thank you, Mayor. I think as it pertains to some of our discussions here today, one of the things that I'm most interested in is the reporting relationship of this position. Previously, when we have talked about this position, I've heard support from the neighborhoods of bringing the position in-house. At current, as part of a CRA contract position, we as a CRA Board have direct access, direct communication, direct ability to speak on projects, et cetera, with staff. The first point under in-house position is direct accountability to the CRA Board or Mayor as opposed to a contractor. I think one of the make it or break it points for me there is that as a member of the CRA Board, I would want that position to report to the CRA Board directly, in that it would have somewhat of a different position than other levels of staff under the mayor, so that commission or CRA Board would have direct access to communicate with that position. So I think that's one of the key details that would be important to me in looking at how we move forward with this position. Again, supportive of looking at how it can come into a city in-house position. I think some of the other points you have here, where there's better synergies, better communication, better processes, that one point for me is very important as to how that gets executed.
Now, Commissioner Riles?
Yeah, I would concur with Commissioner Shov, that's exactly, she said verbatim, what I would have said, you said it better and more eloquently than I did.
Any other comments? Commissioner Neering?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for this information, Ms. Johnson. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for this information, Ms. Johnson. I had a chance, I wasn't here this weekend, so I, but I did get in first thing this morning, so I had a chance to review it. The in-house versus contracted position seems to me specific to the Director's position. Under the contracted position, and I don't know that I remember reading their contract, but I don't know that I remember the specific part of it. The CRA Board can request removal of any contracted employee, sole discretion, so meaning the Board. So, if there was, you know, that Director's position, this Board could say, you know, hey, listen, I think we need to move on for whatever reasons. The in-house position, it sounds to me that we're still figuring out what that would look like in terms of those dynamics, right? In terms of, is this, because as I saw the new, I'm going to call it draft, but I don't know, maybe the latest org chart, thank you very much, it's Monday morning, I appreciate it. The latest org chart, the CRA position is in the Mayor's Cabinet. And so, again, I guess that's the genesis of this conversation, to really figure out what that looks like. Because to me, at that point, this Board really has no discretion on that position in terms of making any decisions about it. It becomes a position that is in the administration. So, shaking head, no. Okay, so am I, I'm reading that wrong?
No, because I thought that the Charter, or the bylaws for the CRA were very specific that the Executive Director would be subject to the determination, approval authority of the Board as a whole, and not just to the Chairman. I mean, it's somewhat of a hybrid, because while it's a city employee, meaning that the employee is paid and subject to the HR requirements, et cetera, of the city, it's still a CRA position, and that position is governed by the Board. That's the way I interpret it. But if you need a more formal opinion, we could certainly get one. It's certainly not my intent to have the sole say on the hiring or firing of the individual in that position. I see that as a CRA Board decision.
And running parallel to that, including the direction in terms of what's considered a priority?
Absolutely, absolutely. Commissioner Paduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to say that I do concur with my colleagues on the dais. I also think that we should take a look at, really, the pros and cons of bringing the position in-house. I think it goes to a lot of the questions that we have right now, of the dynamic between the Executive Director and the CRA Board, as to whether maybe, what the difference would be of keeping it in-house, or having it brought in-house versus maintaining it as an outside contractor. You know, this, the CRA Board obviously didn't have any input in the removal or asking for the resignation of the prior CRA Director, and he was a contractor. I understand there's some different dynamics that were going on because of that position being under the control of city administration. But I think we just need to take a closer look at that, of the ramifications of bringing it in-house versus keeping it outside.
Well, actually, you would probably have more input if it was brought in-house. The contract is between the city and RMA. And so, as a Chief Executive Officer of the city, I can certainly give directive advice to the, RMA is the contractor, that there needs to be a change in that position, which is what we did. If it was an in-house position, and language would be in making it very clear that that is subject to Board approval, blah, 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 then I think the, you as members of the CRA Board would have to weigh in on that. But that's a decision that you have to make. And I just made the recommendation, I think, for a number of reasons, including community accountability. It's best if we have this as an in-house position, a city employee who was the face of the CRA. But that's a recommendation, and you all would have to weigh in on that and have to approve that at appropriate meeting. If that's not the direction which you want to head, that's fine. Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. I think if, you know, we're having these open discussions to also help see if we have some consensus, so I too would like to weigh in on the Director position, if in-house would be accountable to the CRA Board as opposed to just the Mayor. I think we're in agreement upon that now. And you mentioned, we would have a, either, I guess, a CRA meeting or a Commission meeting where we would discuss in way the pros and cons. While I think that we seem to be leaning towards bringing this in-house, I think it is important that we all acknowledge what any deficiencies or downfalls might be if we bring it in-house, just so that we know with our eyes wide open what we might not be able to do anymore, and what was the reason for contracting it out to begin with. And so, whether that's now or before it comes up for a vote, I would just like to make sure we have that information as well.
Do you want a separate workshop on whether or not to bring it in-house, or do you want to discuss that now?
Maybe, I don't know if somebody is prepared to speak about and can talk about why, because it's my understanding, it was in-house to begin with?
The whole department was in-house prior to that time.
And then it became contracted. And so, you know, I believe knowing the history is always very helpful in making decisions on where we're going. So, I don't know if anybody's prepared to do that now. I don't need a whole PowerPoint, but just some information, or even just meeting with me separately. I don't know if my, how my fellow Commissioners, if they want a workshop on that or not.
Commissioner Nering?
Thank you. Well, too, because this becomes uncharted territory, I think, for this city Commission and this Board, this CRA Board, in that I don't believe there is a comparable position, at least since I've been on the dais and paying attention to city politics, so that we, so that the CRA Board still has, I'm going to use this term because I can't think of another one, power to help set the map, if you will, for a position that doesn't answer to the city administration per se, but answers to the CRA Board. So, again, for us, at least, this is uncharted territory. So, that really leads to my next question, which is, throughout the state and different CRAs, do we know if anything like this exists in terms of the ancillary staff, very important to the work getting done, being outsourced, but the Director is a part of, is not a part of that contract? Do we know if that exists anywhere, or can we maybe look into that?
I don't know the answer to that. We could certainly reach out.
Okay, thank you.
Do an inquiry.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rawls?
Yeah, I think, Commissioner Nering, that our internal auditor position is a position within the city that clearly operates independent of the Mayor's office, and we would have the ability to direct this individual. But I do believe that it's necessary for us to look at the whole ball of wax at once, as opposed to piecemealing it, so that we know what we're getting into before we make a decision on that. I would agree with you on that.
So, is there a consensus for having a separate workshop on this question alone, or?
Sounds like it.
Okay, all right. So, City Administrator, if you could schedule that, and we'll just have the workshop. And Commissioners, if you, there's certain information that you need, want to have in advance to consider this item. I've heard a reference to the rationale for outsourcing it from years ago. I don't know if there's anything, any minutes, any memos, or something that speak to that question, if we could dig those out of the archives and get those to the Commissioners. I think I heard in other requests is, are there any other CRAs in the state that have a similar makeup to what we're proposing? Let's see if we could find that information out. And Commissioners, if there's anything else. Yeah, Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Mayor. If there's any way to try to more clearly define the reporting structure during that session, of a potential move inside the city to say, who has the ability to contact, who has the ability to hire, fire, all of that information, I think, would be helpful.
Okay. Anything else on that item? So, we'll get a workshop scheduled. And if you think of any items of information you may need prior to that time, feel free to contact the city administrator and get to that information, so we could make sure you have all the information you need to address this. Okay? Item three, security services, new RFP draft, PSE contract termination. Ms. Erdchak?
There we go. Whoops. This thing is just moving on its own. Thank you. So, this is regarding the security guard services, RFP. How do I, how do, all right. Will it go back? Okay. We're doing it as an RFP, not an ITB, an RFP request for proposals, not an invitation to bid in ITB. And that's what has been done for all of the solicitations for security guard services in at least the last 10 years. The reason being that price alone is not the factor. We're always looking to see what the experience was, if the firm is able to provide similar experience. They understand the various needs of the city and the ability of really close participation with the, and dealing with the public, and also communication protocols. So, the, and the last two, the before the most recent ones, we've always combined the stationary and the roving security services together. And this last, the solicitation that was canceled was actually put out, it wasn't put out as you could pick whatever you wanted to provide, which is what we've heard some rumors are. But there was put out as one to provide roving services, and one to provide like the stationary security guard services, which staff at the time thought may be a way that made sense. I don't think that was thoroughly vetted through. And once people took a look at it, that was one of the reasons to, that it was canceled. So, we now have a new draft of the RFP. It was prepared by procurement and reviewed by the city attorney's office and city administration. We've got input from all the departments. Again, we have CRA input and DDA input. So, the scope of services combines the scopes from the previous issued assigned in roving, so we would have one security firm for the city, who do both assigned, you know, stationary at the city hall entrance, or the water treatment plants, or ECR board, and also roving through various, the parks, the garages, and various other facilities. We've combined them. Again, we want to ensure consistent protocols and procedures for security throughout the city, so it's the same. We want singular appearance, one uniform. So, if the public is at a park or at a city garage, they're looking at the same person. They know it's city security. They look the same. We want one point of contact and command, seamless communication among our security personnel, and efficient contract administration and invoicing. So, we've got, you know, one contract to administer. So, we have the assigned security guard services, the roving in Northwood Village, the city parks. We, the city has determined that this ambassador-type service, we've required this before in our past RFPs, that this is important, that we have guards that are trained and know how to deal appropriately with all members of the public, and that there's efficient communication, not only internally, but with our police department, with this, whatever security firm for the DDA and the Rosemary Square Security. So, these are all important criteria for the scope of services for the RFP. The RFP will include equal opportunity minimum requirements. There's first a small business requirement of 15% of the total contract value. There'll also be a MWBE requirement for a subcontractor that up to 9.92% of the total contract value to be awarded to an African-American MWBE firm. I want to just explain a little bit further. In our, this was not in our, the solicitations that were issued and recalled. And part of that was, the disparity study talks about professional services. Under Florida law, professional services is really limited to architects, engineering, landscape architects, and mappers, and surveyors. But we went back and parsed through the disparity study and looked at Dr. Ramsey's analysis. And in there, there was some discussion about using the term professional services more as the general public knows it as, you need a special license, you've got special education to do this. So, the city attorney and the procurement official talked to Dr. Ramsey and asked, does her disparity study and her analysis, would it support a broader view of professional services? And she went back and looked at it and agreed. She will provide us that. We've asked her to provide us that in writing, but she agreed. She looked at her analysis and had incorporated what people, she didn't look at it in terms of exactly how Florida law looks at what we call professional services, but looked at it in the broader sense. So, she believes that yes, this will allow, her disparity study analysis allows us to apply it in a broader sense. So, our code at this point, although our code was meant to mirror precisely the disparity study, it, we, the definition, we defined it to match the definition in the state statutes for professional services. So, in order to utilize this MWBE subcontractor for these other types of professional, non-CCNA services, we need to amend our ordinance. So, at agenda review, we will have an addition to the agenda for December 2nd, to have an ordinance that will amend our procurement code in our MWBE program to have a broader definition of professional services. And so, that'll be brought to first and second reading, so that ordinance could be in place prior to the proposals being submitted. So, that will, we'll have that in place, and we'll have a broader definition, and be able to utilize the MWBEs for this solicitation. Now, if both, if a firm is both a small business and an MWBE, it can be used to meet both requirements. And at this point, the RFP is very strict in terms that failure to meet both of those requirements would result in disqualification, and not having the proposal considered. One of the other questions that have sort of been bounced around is, should we include in a minimum pay scale? We do not have that in there, but we're bringing this question to the Commission for their comments and weigh in. With both sides, some say, yes, we should have a minimum pay scale, meaning that we require the contractors to pay a minimum hourly rate, so that we know that they're getting, you know, so that they're getting paid a certain living wage. Some of the contractors say that results in more qualified officers and less turnover. We've heard other sides that says sometimes that limits participation of small businesses and the MWBE firms. We've done a survey. Now, this is the billing rate survey. This is not what the employees are actually paid, but that's a survey of what the state contractors, the Palm Beach County contractors, and the last two. and the last two city contracts, what their, what their billing rate for security services were.
How does that compare to what the contractors actually paid?
We don't know for sure because we don't have, know exactly what it is. But what the people who are saying that we should have a minimum wage requirement, say that we should be requiring them to pay a minimum of 15, $14 an hour for their employees.
I thought we had an ordinance that we passed which required contractors doing business with the city to pay 15.
It applies to construction contracts, but not these type of service contracts. So this is one of the questions to the commission is whether we want to set a minimum, require a minimum wage be paid to security officers, and if so, what that, what that amount is. Numbers people are tossing around are $14 an hour. Based on the survey, it looks like some of them may be, may be paying that because they're billing over that several not. Now, the state contracts are coming up for renewal next year. These are a little bit older. We don't know. We've asked the state whether they're going to do something like that. They haven't made that determination yet. But these rates are, these billing rates are probably going to go up. So that's a little bit, it's a little bit older data, so it's a little bit, you know, skewed in terms of, of what we're looking at. The selection process, procurement's going to, they'll receive them and qualify the firm so that anybody who doesn't meet all the requirements, including the SB and the MWBE, will be disqualified and not be considered further. An evaluation committee will review and rank those qualified proposals and determine the top three. We'll bring the top three to the city commission for presentations and selection of the, of the award by the city commission. The proposed timeline is to, and this is a timeline that is tight, but we think realistic. We may be able to gain some time and, and make this a little bit shorter, but this is still a tight schedule. Advertising it December 2nd. The RFP would be due January 10th. That is an extra week due to the holidays, but if we don't ask for it now, the contractor's going to request it. And our schedule is just going to get pushed back anyway, so we'll just start out being realistic. Hoping then that, giving the selection committee two weeks to look at the proposals, that they're able to do the ranking no later than the February 7th. That we'll have February 24th be presentations to the city commission and selection. Contract negotiations, this will be a little bit more, these, the negotiations, we're, it, will take a little bit more time because we are not, for security reasons, spilling out a really detailed scope of what, on the security protocols, we want in every single area for every single department. So once we sit down, this is what we're going to have to explain to the proposer, then work out what that looks like in terms of their hourly rate, compare our budget, weigh the services, and kind of negotiate that to come to a, on a department level, to come to a happy medium for the department director. So that will take a little bit of time. We, we hope to have that complete by early April, be able to give a 38 termination notice to the existing contractor if that's applicable. But at any rate, have the contract effective on or before May 11th. So that's the planned schedule. So next steps, we're looking for direction from the commission, and then we'll be able to advertise the RFP.
Before we move ahead, I want you to go back to your very first slide, which talked about the termination of the prior RFP. Elaborate on the rationale.
On why, on those, why those two were canceled?
Right, right, right. Because there's obviously rumors out there that that was terminated to accommodate a certain vendor, and that was not true. So please, go back to that slide and elaborate again on why that other RFP was terminated.
The, the, the RFPs were put out as two RFPs. One for.
There we go. 207 and 208.
Yes. So 207 was for stationary security guard services and 208 for roving guard, security services. It, it was, it was put out and we first, we even first started getting some inquiries from the security firms on whether and why this was being done this way. And I don't think this was vetted all the way up the, the levels either. We did get a new police chief then who was starting to look at the, our securities and issues. And there had already been some questions raised about communications and the different vendors downtown and who's responsible for different areas. Because there was some areas that everybody's saying, that's not my area to, that's your area. And we had, we had some communication problems. This was out, we took a look at what was put out and realized it was going to add to the confusion and add to the issues. And it really came down to needing a, a consistent communication within the city in terms of security. So the RFPs were, were canceled for that reason. So we could go back and take a better comprehensive look at the scope, the communications, and have security as a whole would be handled for the city. It's also part of, I mean, the city in general has been trying to take all cities, all services that are citywide and bring them into a one master contract instead of having each department having different contracts or random. So we're trying to both gain efficiencies and economies of scale by bringing these things, master contracts in and breaking the, the security contract up into pieces, just went against that and didn't make any sense. So that was also part of the reason to, to bring it in, relook at it, and do it as one comprehensive cohesive procurement.
All right. Thank you. So what direction do you need from this body then?
I think the.
What questions?
The real outstanding question is whether a minimum wage rate is something that the commission wants to see.
Commissioners, any thoughts on that? I, I would like to see it as close to the $15 per hour as possible. I don't know what that does in terms of the cost that we're paying. But I think the statement that we're making to the public is that we want, that we're not talking out of both sides of our mouth. And if we are committed to paying a living wage, which I think the term is, then we need to be consistent. And maybe come up with a, a plan like we did with construction contracts of getting there eventually. But I, I'd like to see it, a minimum wage and as close to the, no less than $14 if possible.
I mean.
My view.
I, I'll just add that the Giddens contract was, the billing rate was 16.28, which I believe then their payment to their employees was close to the $14 level. And I think our budget was sort of based on that around a 16.28 billing rate. So that I think is going to impact, you know, that's where I think it'll be budget-wise. I mean, now that's up to the commission, that's just information for your consideration.
Commissioner Baduzy.
Thank you, Mayor. I think if we were to go this route, I certainly would be for having you a minimal, a minimum hourly rate set. But if we're looking at making a minimum hourly rate in that $15 range, you know, the, the billing rate is going to be closer to the $20 range. And I think if we're looking at those numbers closer to the $20 range, I think we should be taking a step back then and saying, would we be better served? Would our citizens be better served by utilizing that money in support of our police department and actually having police officers patrol these areas that we have, you know, farmed out to private security? When you're getting, you know, a police officer obviously is going to be more expensive than 20 an hour. But the closer you get to that $20 figure, now we're getting closer to the cost of a, of a police officer. And I think we all could agree that there are significant advantages to having a police officer patrolling these areas, assuming that we can put them in place in the same numbers that we put private security guards. But there's significant advantages to having a police officer as opposed to a private security guard. And I think it's just something that, that deserves some discussion.
Also, the numbers. Commissioner Cho.
Thank you, Mayor. As far as the discussion of having a, a minimum pay scale, it would be in support of, of making sure that anybody who's working for the city contractor not is being paid a living wage. One of the other things I wanted to touch on, if I may, is we, we talked about in this RFP, being an RFP versus an invitation to bid. And one of the things that, that I have always been focused on, that this contract has been important, is the security of Northwood Village as it affects District 1 significantly. Service level has a lot to do with that. And so if we're looking at things from an RFP perspective versus at least having some qualifications in there as far as service, every neighbor in the Northwood area can give you a story of previous security firms that have underperformed. I've debated for a while about, about sharing this publicly, but this is just one of, one of personal stories under previous security that I experienced living on a commercial alley in that we had a security guard that directly outside the alley of my home has a touch point. So they have to touch in every hour. And I had some plumbing issues in my house, of which the water shut off is only in the alley. So I had a morning where I woke up and water was pouring into my back bathroom over my electrical panel. So I ran out to the alley, tried desperately with a wrench to try to shut off my water. And during that time, the previous security firm's security guard came up, walked past me on my hands and knees, trying to shut off my water to hit the touch point and go back to his car. And so if anything looked out of place in that neighborhood, it would have been me in the alley on that morning. And when there was nothing said during that time, that was really a key indicator for me. And just the way that story is, there's a number of stories of missed opportunities for security to step in. I need a security company that's going to look at things that look out of place and address them. And so do all of the merchants within Northwood Village, so does everyone in the city of West Palm Beach. So when we're looking at sending out this RFP, which I'm certainly in support of, I want to make sure that when we are getting a security firm that is addressing more than just a pay scale, it's addressing a service level. So what do we have in here that helps us make sure that we're not just looking at price, that we're looking at who can perform?
Well, that is the, the reason why the proposal and part of what they're, and we do explain that that is what we're looking for, so that they're going to look for things out of, out of place and report and deal with them, and that is in black and white in the proposal now. And what we're asking them to do is really provide us a plan that shows their understanding of what the needs of the city, of the city are. And that, at least that will get them through the first cut. The top ones will be coming for a further presentation and discussion amongst the commission. Will you be able to inquire of them whatever your, your concerns are to make sure that you are comfortable with the firm?
And if I may, Mayor, as a follow-up.
Yes, yes.
We indicated that there's going to be an evaluation committee that precedes proposals coming to the commission. Who, who will select that evaluation committee?
Well, the, the procurement code says either the procurement official or the mayor determines the evaluation committee.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And to the point about establishing a minimum wage, I am also in favor. I do feel like I need a little bit more information. I am confused on the, it looks like, as, as these numbers are shown, a big difference between the last two West Palm Beach contracts. And so I'd like more information on how much each of the security guards were paid and why the discrepancy here. As far as the service and the selection, do you mind going back to the slide where you talk about the selection committee? And while you're doing that, I just, so, so are we saying that the commission is not the selection committee?
No, the commission is the selection.
Okay.
The final selection.
Okay, thank you. And as has been in place for other selection processes that this body has sat and reviewed, we've had a rubric, will, and to Commissioner Cho's point about qualifications, will we have that again? How, what will be our criteria for selecting the, the new contract?
There is, I mean, yes, we will, we will, staff will, will look through and set out, sort of detail the, the proposals for the commission, so to make it easier for your review. There is evaluation factors in the RFP with points. They basically go to the, the things that we've discussed here. Do they have the ambassador type service? Do they really have an understanding of what the city needs? It, it does look at pricing, but it, it looks at the, the factors that we've, you know, that we've asked for. And we've asked them to tell us what equipment and other things, more details of that. But yes, we would, we would certainly provide the proposals and the summary to commission to enable your, your review.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thanks for your presentation. So I think we all can agree that this is not, this RFP is not business as usual. And that I think, at least for me, the way that I will proceed is with, with an abundance of caution throughout everything. So one of the things that I would suggest is that we look at perhaps the top five that is coming back to us in terms of evaluation committee versus three. I think the broader, that evaluation process, the better. So that, that's one suggestion that I, I would offer up. The other question I have for you is, you talked about the contracted rate, and there were two in particular, the last two on that slide, 16.28 and $12 per hour. What do you have, what were the overall budgets? Because that can, I mean, I appreciate that and this is helpful. But if one of those contracts was $4 million and the other was $1 million, then that means to me that just someone is perhaps paying their employees a lot more for less employees. So I, it's, it's hard for me to wrap my arms around what this really means. Do you, do you have that information?
I, I do not have that information.
You see where I'm going with that?
Yes.
Okay.
You also have to look at the dates of the contracts too, right? Some of those contracts are older than others.
Yeah.
Well, the two, I, I had only referred to the two in particular. One is one that I think was just canceled and the, and the one that was brought on. Those two were the ones that I was really, because they're West Palm Beach contracts. So that, that was really my question around that. And then the other piece, only because, you know, it was brought up and I think it's, it's a valid question. You know, we talked about why the two initial contracts were canceled. And some of that had to do with the equal opportunity piece. It was the, the roving versus stationary, and, and I can appreciate all of that. Could you speak to then, and I'm, I, I am glad we are to this point in which that we are putting out an RFP. Can you speak to why, and again, because this was brought up, we canceled those contracts, why, why we didn't get here sooner to this, to this point? I think it's a fair question, given that, that we're talking about why the contracts were canceled in the first place. Does that make sense, the question or no? I'll try and rephrase it if it doesn't.
Why the RFPs were canceled or why the contract?
No, so we, we, so we canceled contracts and we canceled RFPs, RFPs. So we canceled those, and you talked about why we canceled them. Then it feels like we, we jumped, and we approved that, but we jumped. We jumped from canceling contracts, canceling RFPs, to providing it to a sole source. But we're here now in terms of this RFP process. I'm just curious from your perspective of, once we canceled those RFPs, was there any discussion around, you know, getting to this point that we are today, but maybe a month ago or two months ago?
Well, yes, I mean, since that time, there was a whole discussion in terms of the issues that were raised. There was, back with the departments to determine what their real needs were. And then coordinating, putting those two back together, the roving and, and what was broken out. So putting it back together, again, going back to the departments because there was some conflicts and issues. And then just waiting for this meeting to be scheduled.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Ross.
Yeah, I, I have a real basic question. In preparing the RFP for this security contract, obviously, security is a specialty of some sort. Did anyone in procurement ask a security professional to assist them with preparing the RFP?
In terms of other security firms or contractors, everybody wants the opportunity to participate. So if they were, if they contributed to preparation of the RFP, they would be disqualified from participating. And so the firms and entities that we're familiar with want to be able to submit a proposal. So there hasn't been further outside. I mean, we've received comments, we, we've been contacted by, you know, procurement's gotten some comments from. Procurement's gotten some comments from contractors, informal, unofficially, but did we take the draft and give it to someone to review thoroughly? No, because they all want to have the opportunity to participate.
Every security professional in America wanted an opportunity to participate.
The local ones here. Did we go out and look for, to hire another specialist? No. But the people that we're familiar with here, they want to be able to participate.
Any other questions? Did you get guidance on all the issues that you needed to hear from us on?
I think so. My understanding is that the commission wants some level of minimum wage in the RFP.
Yeah. Commissioner Peduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. And I know we've been talking about this RFP, but if we could take a step back and talk about the potential liability that we could incur with canceling the current contract that we're in. You know, we've already got a lawsuit against the city by the prior contractor. Are we going to be facing a lawsuit by this contractor also? What's our liability, the potential liability to the city?
Well, as you saw in your packet, that the contract allows a 30-day termination with or without cause on 30 days' notice. There is a provision in Exhibit A that, on the contract, that talks about how they're renting certain equipment under 36-month lease, and if we cancel within that 36 months, the city would be responsible. That's the facts that we know. We know that a representative was at a podium speaking about this matter in public comment, and threw out that, oh, there's already $200,000 in expenses to the city. That's a comment, made a public comment. I don't have any documentation. I don't know anything further than that. I think that's something that we'd have to look at, see if that's real, negotiate that, see if that's really an issue or not. So, I don't have a complete answer to that. We certainly can cancel the contract, and what, if any, costs... I mean, I don't know if they went out after knowing that... I don't know at what point in time they hired this, you know, ordered the equipment. Was it after they knew that we were possibly terminating? I don't know. There's still a whole lot of facts that will need to be gathered there, once we do that.
Yes.
Just a quick follow-up. Yeah, I just wasn't clear with the wording, because it's not really very specific. When it says, "Either party may cancel service agreement within 30 days' written notice to the other party." Equipment costs are based on a 36-month agreement. I assume that they're talking about the 36-month agreement with the city, that they're kind of amateurizing it, or saying that they purchased this equipment based upon the expectation of payments over 36 months? And then it says, "If contract is terminated by the client prior to the completion of the 36 months, then client agrees to pay the remaining amount due for the 36-month period." Are they talking about the full contract amount over the 36 months? Or are they talking about their equipment costs, if they can produce leases or something? It seems to me it's fairly vague, that they could argue potentially that they expended a certain amount of money in expectation of having the contract for 36 months, and that because of that, they expect to be paid for the 36 months.
It is somewhat vague. The contract document itself, you know, says they're going to get paid per what's in the contract. This is their exhibit attached, is their exhibit, it wasn't prepared by the city, and it has this information, and that's vague. We read it as, at worst case, that they're claiming the full contract value for any equipment that's being leased to serve the contract. But again, have not had discussions with them. I can't tell you exactly how they're going to interpret that. But it is an issue.
And I can follow up again, Mayor.
Yes.
I assume that this exhibit was incorporated by reference in their main contract, though.
Yeah.
So, it is a part of the contract?
It is a part of the contract.
Okay. And it... I mean, just reading the part, "The client agrees to pay the remaining amount due for the 36-month period." We're not a party to any leases that they would have had that are private leases, or finance agreements that they would have. So, I think that there's a valid argument that they could make, that the 36 months refer to the contract term with us, and that we could potentially be liable for paying their entire 36-month contract term. And if that's the case, then, you know, if we're doing all this in the effort to be transparent with our constituents, and making sure this is done in the correct manner, I mean, if we're going to be incurring a liability of a 36-month, you know, contract with a security company that will no longer be performing, and then we're going to be paying twice for another provider, I certainly think we need to at least have City Attorney's Office take a look at that very carefully, and make sure that we haven't incurred that kind of liability.
We will. The rules for government are a little bit different. Even just to tell you that, we actually are only ever on the hook. So, for one year's your budget, we budget on an annual basis. So, anything beyond a budgeted year is executory-only in nature of terms of a contract. So, we couldn't possibly be held for 36 months of costs. So, there are some special rules for government contracts, so... But we definitely will look thoroughly at all of the potential issues.
Commissioner Neering.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is an important item, but I do want to make sure that we button up the first piece before we move on. Is that okay?
Sure.
In terms of the follow-up? Because you had given one, and then I think it's a very important point, but then we went right to the, I think, the second part of maybe this presentation. So, one of the things that I had asked, and again, obviously, it's up to the Mayor and the commission, but that we look at five proposals being brought to us as opposed to three. And the other thing that I had asked for, if you could provide to me, specific to the West Palm Beach contracts, the sixteen, twenty-eight, and twelve dollars, what is the total contracts based on that? Based on those figures? Those were my two that I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else? I would thank you for this presentation. You have sufficient information, you believe, to move forward with an RFP. Okay.
Yes, Mayor.
All right. I don't have anything else under Mayor's Matters.
Excuse me, Mayor. The last part of this is actually a discussion on the termination of PSC's contract, and I think you all started that and didn't have a complete discussion.
I'm sorry if I jumped forward.
No, that's fine. I mean, what's the issue there?
Well, we need... I believe maybe more than one commissioner asked to have a work session discussion on it, so we're looking for you to engage in that discussion and give the staff direction on whether or not we are keeping this contract in place, or the direction is to execute the 30-day termination provision in the contract.
We're going to keep the contract in place until we complete the RFP, and identify another provider. But I'm not going to have the city without a security contract in place. Commissioner Neering.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I just want to put, you know, kind of my opinion on this on record. You know, I think, you know, we are... We've gone back, and we've issued an RFP, and I think I've been overstated in that hindsight's 20-20, but, you know, wish we could have, or I could have voted from day one that we do that. But the fact of the matter is, that is where we are today. Had we done that a month and a half, two months ago, what's clear to me is that entities would have stayed in place. And so, what we would be talking about is a vetted process, and then identifying a single source. And so, my recommendation would be that we go back and we make whole prior to awarding the no-bid contract, the providers for security. And I say that with an understanding that I realize I've received several emails, and I've seen firsthand that the current security provider is performing. There is no doubt around that, and I can appreciate the emails that I've received. It's one of the reasons why I've asked for the total budget, because if there are 10 security men or women out on the street versus a provider that was budgeted for four, of course, there's going to be a difference. And so, once again, I'd like to have all of the information, all of the facts, in order to kind of move forward. But out of an abundance of caution, it would be my recommendation that we do, in fact, invoke the 30-day clause, you know, within our contract, and go back to the way that it was prior to the no-bid security contract, knowing that, at this point, the goal is to have, I think, at some point in May of 2020, a sole provider in place.
So, you're saying that we kind of pretend this never happened, and go back to Giddens? Is that your suggestion?
Definitely not pretending, because I've lived this, so definitely not pretending. What I'm saying is, had we done it right the first time, and that's my word, "right," we wouldn't be in this situation, and I wouldn't have to make this comment around going back to Giddens. And I hate that I have to... For me, it's not about a Giddens versus a PSC. I mean, again, and I think that's where I feel bad for, especially our residents in the north end, because the emails that I've received has really been around the quality of their service, and I appreciate that. And I'm not here to say anything different, but as I said, and have always stated from this day, there is a process to it. And that's what I'm being held accountable for, the process, and ensuring that the process is done in a transparent and correct way. So, definitely not a pretend for me, and I don't take making this comment lightly. I mean, I realize that there are jobs at stake, as there were when we awarded the no-bid contract. I realize that we have a security provider in place who, by all accounts, is doing a phenomenal job on the north end of the city. Or maybe throughout, but specifically in the north end, I've heard very good things about that provider. But again, I don't have all the facts, and so, you know, that's why I asked the budget question, because if there are 10 patrols versus four patrols, then I would imagine that that's why you've noticed a big difference, but I don't know that to be the case. So, I just wanted to make sure that I put on record how I feel about this, and that's my comment.
Commissioner Shof.
Thank you. And certainly, respectfully, I acknowledge Commissioner Neering and his feelings towards this matter. Having more patrols on the street isn't going to stop somebody from not stopping to see that someone is in distress. Having more security on the street is not going to stop me walking with my seven-year-old niece over to Art Night Out, a time when more people are coming to the north end than would typically be, and there is a homeless man exposing himself so much that I have to take a turn down an alley to avoid that. There are key things that are happening here in the north end, and I know there are a lot of political things at play, but I have received emails from the Northwood Merchants' Board, Oliver Olivier Patonk, John from This Is It, Will and Matt from Day by Day, Pete from Pepino's, Mohammed from Tina's Grocery, Ingo from Stone Button, both owners at Urban Earth, Peter at Old Metal Classics, a number of residents. I can't turn back the hands of time, and if I could, I would have had more information than I do today, but I am vehemently against going back to the security that we had. Very much in support of having the process going forward, to be open, transparent, and fair, but I'm speaking from a very passionate place of representing District One, and saying that things have vastly improved there, and the merchants are the people who are going to be affected. These are people who their livelihoods depend on that area being safe and secure, and for them, I'm supportive of moving forward, keeping the people who are doing a good job in place, and looking at this process going forward and moving ahead to the future to see how we can better make a fair and transparent process.
Commissioner Peduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. And while I agree in theory with Commissioner Neering, I have to concur with Commissioner Shof. The people in the Northwood area feel safe right now, and they haven't felt that in some time, at least, prior to the award of this no-bid contract. So, I think that we have to move cautiously, and I've heard the same thing from the constituents in that area, that they are very much opposed to ending the contract immediately with PSC. They want those security guards at least kept in place until we can identify the winning person, you know, pursuant to the request for proposals. I heard Commissioner Neering make a comment of making whole, or making the prior contractor whole, something to that effect, and maybe I misheard him. But we have to remember that the prior contractor was in the process of reaching the natural expiration of their contract. It wasn't that we ended their contract early. Their contract was expiring, and all we did was tell them that we weren't renewing it.
It expired. They were operating month to month.
Exactly. So, I don't know that there's any being made whole that needs to be done, because they had already fulfilled the terms of the contract, and we had already fulfilled our obligation under that contract. But I strongly agree with Commissioner Shof, that we have to make sure that public safety is our number-one concern, and make sure that our citizens are never left unprotected.
Commissioner Neering.
And I appreciate the passion and the comments. I want to be super clear about something. Definitely not in support of leaving our residents or businesses out to dry. I think the passion in terms of where we are now and how we got here should be directed at one place, and that's the administration. That's the administration brought forth, a no-bid contract, and this commission approved it, and at least I can speak for myself, with probably a third of the information needed. And there's an African proverb that says, "When the elephants fight, the grass suffers." And I realize that, again, I'd much rather be talking about something different on a Monday morning versus canceling a contract, but out of an abundance of caution, for me, and again, I want to be clear about this, in the process, it is really why I'm making this comment. I have no horse in the race. Whether it's Giddens, or PCS, or if it was another security contract, my whole point is, we, I, made a mistake in terms of the initial vote on this, and wish I had been more outspoken regarding that. Can't go back, can't change that. We have put out an RFP, and at this point, the calendar reads May, and we know how the things work in city government, so if it says May there, you know, maybe August of 2020. And let's not pretend that this current service provider and their leadership isn't embroiled in a major issue within our city. So, there are many variables to this. I don't sit here and make this comment flippantly. I'm doing it, again, out of an abundance of caution, but respect, but totally respect the opinion of my fellow commissioners, and I am but one voice, and will obviously support whatever direction we move. So, I really want you to hear me on that. Whatever direction we move, of course, I will support it, but I also want to make clear where I stand on it.
Madam President, do you have something to say?
Thank you, Mayor. I do think that it is... I mean, we're dealing with an issue of security and safety, and I don't think any of us wish that we were debating and discussing this topic here today or for the last month, as we have been. So, I think we can all agree upon, if we had to do it all over again, the process would be different, because we all certainly know more facts now than we knew at the time. We did, however, all vote, 5-0, in favor of this company, and we are hearing, I think, a number of the residents and business owners who Commissioner Shof mentioned, we've all heard from as well. I think that in ensuring that there is not a lapse in the safety and security of our residents, that we need to move as quickly as possible with the RFP process. We have seen, yes, some things that take a long time in government, but we've also seen things stay on target, and I would make the request to staff that we do everything that we can, not only to meet, but if possible, because I heard there might be some areas for efficiencies to beat that May 2020 deadline, because I do hear you, Commissioner Neering, and I do think that there are some other issues at play here. And is this 100% the way that we would have done it? Heck, no. But I think that we're... But I think that we're playing with the cards that we're dealt right now.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Neering on the process. I too regret the decision to vote for 5-0 vote, awarding the contract based on insufficient information. I likewise understand the need for security in Northwood, and I've received the very same emails from the residents and from the businesses there. I'm a person that believes in process, and the process has been frustrated in this instance. And I understand that in competing interests between the citizens and their safety and us standing firm on process, it's a very tough decision to make. And I don't make it without a lot of deliberation, but, you know, I do believe that we, it's obvious that the current provider is going to be there until May. I would ask that city staff, with all deliberate speed, and that's from the Brown v. Board Education case, it took them 20 years in order to get integration in Palm Beach after Brown v. Board Education. So I hope it doesn't take us 20 years to get this RFP on the street, and we need to move with all deliberate speed.
While I appreciate the input of the commission, I will remind you that this is a contract that is valid, that's been approved by the process. There was a process that was followed. I too, if I'd had the information before bringing it to you, I wouldn't have brought it to you. Be that as it may, and if administration is at fault, certainly I have big shoulders. But be that as it may, the contract is in place. Now that the contract is in place, while I appreciate your comments as a commission, you really have no say as to whether that contract will be terminated. That is part of the administrative, the administration's, the strong mayor's executive powers. And so we cannot have a precedent where the commission is going to vote to terminate a contract that has been validly approved. Otherwise, every contract the city enters into would be subject to the subsequent decision of a commission. That's not the way our charter is structured. So I appreciate hearing everyone's comments and everything, but never let it, I don't want you to doubt in any way that you were veering outside of the legislative into the executive lane, which is a lane that the strong mayor occupies solely. And so as the exercise of my executive authority, I was not going to allow a commission vote to terminate that contract. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that clarification. Why did we put it on the agenda to even have a discussion?
I didn't put it on there, somebody requested it.
Yeah, I will take responsibility for putting it on the agenda for a discussion based on a request I think we heard in different meetings. A number of commissioners asked to have this for a work session discussion. And so if I overstepped administrative bounds with putting this on for a discussion, it was in that vein, based on the requests and comments from several commissioners that you all wanted to have a discussion regarding the termination of the PSC contract. And I think when I sent out the email listing the various items that different commissioners had requested to be workshopd, agended, it was in that perspective that this one, given it has some degree of urgency and priority, it was agended for today's work session.
And I appreciate that. I guess I would have been helpful to have that preamble prior to the conversation, but it's all good. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Anything else?
Mayor.
Yes.
I do have a comment about that, and I think that we all want to be very respectful of the legislative and executive roles of this body and administration. I think that, at least when I saw this on the agenda, knowing that there are certain restrictions of what the commissioners, what our role is regarding contracts or not, I think that it was to have a discussion, because this is not our typical situation with a contract, and would just hope that in that vein, we would be heard and could have a discussion that this is not typical, and I don't think that, you know, a contract with a PR agency or a contract, you know, that didn't have all of these external factors that this contract has, we would not be having these same discussions.
And we had the discussion. I let you all talk, debate, and I saved my comments for the very end. You had clearly articulated your views to the public.
Thank you.
Anything else? Commissioner Shoff.
I have a comment on another matter, just at the very end, if we're all complete on this matter.
Yes.
At the last commission meeting, we received a letter on the golf course. We had a November 18th deadline for that, and it was going to be scheduled for further discussion. I just want to make sure that that doesn't get delayed. I know today's agenda was pretty packed, but at the soonest, we can have that discussion to see how we're proceeding forward as far as the PGA would be great.
Yeah, I, my recommendation, and I mentioned it to staff, because I think there's a way we could go down a parallel path. My recommendation is to terminate the RFP for the golf course. Doesn't mean we can't continue discussions with McGitrick or whoever, but I think that we open up the playing field, if you will. I think we were very clear to McGitrick, November 18th was a hard and fast deadline. They did not meet the obligations in terms of showing us the money, if you will, and so I don't see any reason to extend that deadline. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't continue to have conversations with them, but by terminating the RFP, I think it opens up the playing field for others to come in with unsolicited bids or proposals, and we can see what's out there. But if we keep extending this deadline, we, in effect, continue the cone of silence so that no one else can come talk to us, and it gives McGitrick an exclusive platform in which to negotiate. And I don't think that's fair, and I don't think it's in the best interest of the city. Now, if McGitrick thinks they can come up with PGA or somebody else at some point, okay, but let's see if we can open this up and get some more ideas. We have kept that door closed for too long in favor of McGitrick, and they keep coming up on the day of or the day prior to the deadline, saying we need more time. Enough is enough. Let's see what else is out there. Yes.
To that, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that up. It was on the top of my mind as well. To that point, Mayor, I think what we're looking for is communication on what is that process. So, you know, we received word that 5:00 on last Monday that the deadline had passed, but we're looking for now public discussion on what is the process moving forward. I know I did receive a call from Mr. Rick Green towards the end of last week discussing this, but I don't know if we are having a group discussion on what is the process, because I know there was discussion at one point, are we just automatically taking the third? Are we opening it up to more, or are we giving more time to McGitrick? And I think that's what I'm looking for, is when are we having those discussions so that we know the process to move forward? Or are you telling us that's out of our scope and that you're giving direction?
Well, my desire is, and I don't know if this is a legislative decision or executive, I think it would be executive. We got an RFP out that's been properly approved and vetted by you as a legislative body, and now the question is, how do we, do we terminate that or keep extending the deadline? The extension of the deadline falls within the executive authority. So my view as a chief executive, let's terminate that, get whatever document out that we need to get to, to all parties concerned, that the RFP is now terminated. And the process now is, yeah, we're back at square one, but we at least have a couple of parties that are interested, and if they want to continue to talk to us, whether it's McGitrick, whether it's PGA or whoever, or anybody else who may be out there that wants to talk to us about our golf course, now we have the opportunity to have those conversations. If we keep the RFP open, there's a cone of silence, and we can't have conversations, you all can't be approached, I can't be approached, about other possibilities. And my view is, we've given McGitrick more than enough time to show that they can produce. They haven't done it. And so my instruction to staff would be to, whatever declaration we need to terminate this RFP, effective immediately, and if McGitrick still wants to come back to the table with an opportunity to try to give, show us the money, okay, but now it opens up the playing field for others to also talk to us about what they'd like to do. And at some point, we may decide we want to go back on the street with another RFP. But no, we're not going to automatically move to the next one. We've done that. We went from one to two to three, you know. I think we are chasing our own tail if we continue to keep this RFP open and eliminate the possibility of having discussions with other potential parties that want to do business with us on the golf course. Commissioner Neering.
Thank you. I think the other piece that we had talked about was what the temperament of this commission was regarding development. It's, I don't know that we've done that with this group of individuals in terms of, I guess, a consensus on what that looks like, you know? Are we talking about zero development versus developing the entire golf course? And obviously, those are two ends of the continuum.
And we could certainly have that conversation. I don't think we need to have it now, and I don't think we need to have it.
I don't want to have it now. I was mentioning, just to say that I don't want to lose sight of that.
No, I think that's very fair, and obviously, as we get approached, if we do, I'm being optimistic, by other persons who want to do business with this, and we'll see what those look like, yeah, we'll schedule a workshop to see what the marketplace seems to be bringing to us, and whether that is something that we even have an appetite for going forward. Okay? Yeah, Commissioner, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have another item, but I don't know where we are on the agenda. It is very important, and I realize we're short on time, but thank you. Last Monday, this commission voted down and rejected a proposal for a settlement regarding the issue with our previous city administrator. I'm just, you know, hopeful that your administration will help keep the commissioners, as well as the public, up to date on what we're doing moving forward. I understand, and I welcome an FDLE investigation into this, or whatever we need to do to make sure that we're picking up every rock, turning over every stone, to make sure that we're investigating this thoroughly, that we're transparent in the process, that we are doing whatever we can to instill, that our staff and our city is still working hard, that we are moving forward and progressing and getting back to the business at hand, but not brushing this under the rug and not excusing any of this.
Well, no, that's a very fair comment. First of all, we never stopped doing the business of the city. I think our staff has remained focused on getting things done, but I appreciate you bringing this up. You know, there's some discussion, we even had a state legislator who weighed in on what our city should do, but I'll address that in another forum. Be that as it may, we certainly welcome any investigation. The situation is, as I understand it, as recently as over the weekend, there has not been a police report filed. There's not been a complaint filed, so therefore, there's not a police report. So therefore, there's nothing to investigate at this point. So we can't go to FDLE to investigate something where there has not been a complaint filed. Now, obviously, her attorney has issued a letter making these allegations, whether the alleged victim will then take that to the police and file a criminal complaint. I don't know, but I think we plan to, at some point, sooner rather than later, approach the attorney and say, listen, are you going to file a complaint? But to the extent that there is a complaint filed, we, and I'm getting this information because we've made preliminary contact with FDLE, because I would like, and I think most of you would like to have, an independent investigation of the criminal, alleged criminal behavior, so that it's as transparent as possible. And the process is, there's no victim yet, because there hasn't been a complaint. So if and when that happens, my view is that we will continue to reach out and see if we can get assistance from an independent criminal investigation agency to assist us. So that's where we are, is while we have made some preliminary requests for assistance, it's not ripe yet for assistance, since there has not been a complaint filed by the alleged victim. Yes, Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate that update, and, you know, I think that there's definitely value to having an independent investigation, but I think, I'll speak from only my point of view, what I saw during this process was definitely some areas that we haven't for improvement, only from our level internally. And that's no commentary on your leadership, Mayor. I understand these issues have been longstanding through various leadership, and so I still think that regardless of a criminal complaint, if we could look into some options on how we internally address those matters from an administration point of view and staff, I would welcome that.
No, that's a very fair conversation. I'm not sure now is the time to do it, but Ms. Johnson, if you could have, at a workshop in the very near future, a discussion of what our sexual, not our harassment, it's not just sexual, our harassment policy is, what kind of training we do with our staff and have done, so that the commission can understand the procedures and policies we already have in place, and ask any questions, if they have any suggestions for improvement. But that's a very fair question, very fair concern, and I will assure you that we do have and have implemented, over time, a number of policies to make sure that this is an open and welcome place in which to work, but we will give you more information on that going forward. Okay? Anything else? Hearing on this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.